All right, all right, I'd like to call this work session to order. I'd like to welcome everybody to the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one work session, official times five oh one. If we can have a motion to go into work session for water.
Motion.
Have a motion and have a second?
Second.
Second, on favor, I? Let's have it, thank you. Mr. Angerm, you and Jeffrey, who want to start off and bring the new board up to speed? Where are we at and where we need to go and suggest?
Yeah, everybody sit down and look in front of them. This is funded as of the last few days. I want you to jump over to the first half, which is projects completed. And that'll give you a list of projects, but there are others, just being completely all of them. The projects we have done, places we have replaced water main, new projects built, areas expanded all the way back to two thousand eight, two thousand seven. Just to give you what we've accomplished, everyone on the left side under funding source, the red are two Jeepa projects we've had funded. Both of them had a half million dollars loan subsidy with them. One of them had a half million dollars, the other one had about four and nine thousand dollars actually. And the local is either water department revenue or it is splash money. Where it was splash, and I knew it was splash, I listed it as splash, the other ones I didn't. You'll notice there are three, four projects in there that have asterisks bound. We've done two phases of the water main replacement, where we have replaced about twenty-five hundred water meters. Gray Highway Water Main was installed in two sections, the first section from Joy Cliff up to Station Eight, and then Station Eight all the way up to Greenwood Baptist Church. It's not complete because there's no, no interconnection with the Bush pump there. That's what we call hydraulic gray lines from being the light tie, air to drive tank versus the gray highway Joy Cliff. There's sixty, eighty foot elevation between those tanks there. But this is, this is some of the things we've been, been able to accomplish over the last thirteen, fourteen years. If you go to the next half, active projects, this is what's going on today. Well number ten, the new well for the Henderson Road Water Treatment Plant, under construction. Greens were sitting, screen line and column piping today, backfilling, we've raveled the data mark. The water meter replacement to finish that out, two thousand one hundred twenty-three meters left to be installed. It is out for bid, bid will do back February the second. And for some reason, we've got somebody from Memphis, we've got somebody from Kentucky, and we've got somebody from Indiana looking at this, which is rather unusual. The three generators for the Haddock wells, they're under design, Charles Cobb, our electrical guy's putting those together. And then, and then a separate project is going on. Charles is doing a wiring diagram for the generator to go here. The two hundred KW surplus generator we have, Zapf Delli Manufacturing and O'Callaghan being fitted with fuel tank. He's replacing the EMA generator at the back of the building. It is the wrong voltage, not sure how, but I know why they've had all kinds of damage when they run it, because this is not compatible with the old. And then he's replacing the generator, the oil flow plane generator at the nine one one tower. I think the two EMA generators in the late twenties, maybe thirty year old range. And those, those are our active projects. And behind that page, bid tab for the well, the budget we had set up for the meter changeout program, and then the generator. The entry road well, the Duncan well, the Bradley well, those generators won't be expensive. If they're expensive, there's a twenty, there'll be some miscellaneous upgrades to go in there for it. But we're, we're expecting to probably win around ninety dollars.
Tim, are any of, are any of these water, these generators here eligible for any GMA or FEMA funding? I know it shows we had some Jeepa.
We applied for some of those. So, but the GMA has got a program that'll provide generators for EMA offices, and so that's the idea on the EMA, EMA replacement generator is to get that funded through GMA. I think they have all of our application materials, I have to confirm with Don, but I'm ninety-nine percent sure they have everything they need for that. It just all got frozen when, when COVID hit. And so, we feel certain that we'll get funding for the EMA replacement generator from GMA. And then Don was planning to use some of his remaining splash money in the current splash to, to do the one at the EMA tower.
Because I know we had talked with him about water systems, because I know the Macon Water Authority was going to apply for some, for water, water systems, if a city or county owned a utility company, they would be eligible for it, sewer plants, that kind of stuff, because they're considered emergency infrastructure that would have to be running, you know. So, I guess if we, if we apply and get any of that, it can come back to whatever local fund it comes out of. But I would, I would hope we apply for, for all of that that we can.
If you will, jump back to the very front cover, where you have the Jones County Water Systems, Water Balance Detail. The next three pages, if you will look at that third page, which is employee room. This is, this is done by fiscal year, this is a report, the water department generates each year, runs September seventeenth through August the eighteenth, just the raw water pump each month, any purchase from Macon Water Authority, what was sold, bulk water sold, city of grade, hydrant flushing, and then loss or gain, whatever we had that month. For the year, Jones County produced five hundred forty million, six hundred eighty-nine gallons. It's a million, four hundred eighty-one thousand, three hundred and forty gallons per day. As a rule, when we design water supply, we are supposed to take the average day, multiply times three, and we should be able to produce three times the average day, or one and a half times maximum day. So our average day demand, which would have been June, July, August, September, would have been our maximum, I get these, we have average day we deal with, which was a million four eighty-one, maximum day and peak hour. Our peak hour demand we experienced that year was three thousand and eighty-six gallons. That would have been either ten to two, or six to ten PM in the afternoon, everybody's home, washing clothes, washing cars, playing, bathing, whatever. Typically, it's right around lunch, it ends around two o'clock, you see a table off, then around five to six, it starts and it goes back to the clock. And that's pretty much an everyday occurrence. If you go to the next sheet, September of eighteen through August the nineteenth, average production for the entire year was a million five twenty-seven. That pushed our peak hour demand up to three thousand one eighty-one. If you go to twenty, September nineteenth through August twentieth, average day was a million five twenty-nine, peak hour was three thousand one hundred eighty-five gallons a minute. Now, you make a peak hour demand with storage and production. We have seven hundred twenty-five gallons a minute at Massiville, two fifty at Largo, five oh five at Grizzleville, and six ninety. That's about twenty-two hundred gallons a minute. So the other nine hundred eighty-five gallons a minute is coming out of storage. I've told you all this before, and I'm thankful, it's there, the two million gallon ground storage tank, if we hadn't have it, we probably wouldn't have water four, five times. Because we'll pull it down to eighteen, nineteen feet, we'll pull it up to twenty-nine feet. Some days it'll run forty, they'll run like that, three, four days, maybe run a week. They run two weeks, may have to call the city, ask them to cut the valve off, to stop pulling so we can gain, we can gain when we stop with the city. But we have to call and ask them to cut it off, we'll cut it back. This summer, we had a break. We had a leak at the corner of forty-nine Garrison Road, forty-nine, and then the next day, we had one in Creekside on the twelve inch line. That was a Tuesday morning or Wednesday morning. We filled back up center of the line, we had everything topped off center of the line. So we ran nonstop from Tuesday, lunchtime, Wednesday morning, all the way to Sunday. I tell you all that for one reason. Of all the projects in this book, if you flip over to the priorities list, and then some of the water priorities, it just gets detailed out. The first three projects, water production. It is water production. Henderson Road Water Treatment Plant, the board funded the new well. That's going, we feel like that's going to push us over a thousand gallons a minute going into the well. But we didn't find any improvements to get it out of the plant. Three of the four plants we have pumped into an aerator where carbon dioxide is driven off, or iron is oxidized, and it goes into a clear well, and it's chlorinated, pH is adjusted, and it's pumped into the system. So we have a two pump system at all the plants but Largo. Largo is just a, is a honey hole, literally, the water quality's fine. Everything around it isn't, but there is fine. It pumps directly into the system. Henderson, we're going to have this new well, two fifty, three hundred gallons a minute to go with what we got, but we still will pump six hundred ninety gallons a minute out of the plant. The improvements, if you flip over to the next half, the work priority staff, Henderson Road is the first one. What makes this such an expensive project? If I go too fast, just let me know, I'll, I'll back up. Henderson Road to the, to the forty-nine tank, probably about two hundred sixty feet vertical elevation to it, that's a long way. We replaced the old six inch line that was there in two thousand six or two thousand seven, where we basically stopped at Mr. Henderson's house and went to forty-nine, to the ground storage tank, and we went down Garrison to where the ten inch line there at Rockport. This time, we're looking to pick up at Henderson Plant, run about four thousand feet of ductile iron pipe, and then five thousand feet of PVC, and tie into the sixteen. My problem here, operational wise, I go to a thousand gallons a minute at the plant, discharge pressure goes to about a hundred sixty-five pounds. Plastic pipe does nine hundred sixty-five pounds. They'll, it'll fatigue it and start splitting, and when it splits, we'll split twenty foot sections of it. And even with that ten inch line, I'll drain that two million gallon tank probably about forty-five minutes. And when it does, we're just, it just creates a mess. It's really a catch twenty-two. To get the extra water out that we've got, we've got to do some line upgrades. The advantage is, the advantage is, when the day comes, another water plant needs to be built there, we tie into that same sixteen inch line and pump to the, to the Highway forty-nine tank. One thing I skipped, if you go back to your water balance sheet. When you look at five hundred fifty-eight million gallons produced for the year, and you take out the city of grade, that leaves four hundred forty-six million gallons produced for the year. Three hundred sixty-five days, that's a million, two twenty-four. Divide that by forty-one hundred. Every customer's using about three hundred gallons a household. EPD tells us to estimate two sixty. So, we've got, we've got, our usage is higher than normal. I've got about a hundred lots in the works right now for new homes. How, how long will it take them to come? Two years, maybe? Maybe three? My million five twenty-nine average is going to cut to a million eight twenty-nine. I can't, that's going to be an eight twenty-nine. I mean, on an average day I can, but when you put a peaking factor of a million eight twenty-nine, and a one and a half peaking factor on, that's two seven. Can't do two seven, can't do two seven in a day. You put a three peaking factor on for a peak hour, it pushes it close to four thousand gallons a minute, there's no, there's no way. There's just no way. We've got to do something with production. So if you walk away tonight, and everything else confuses you, you don't like what you hear, I need to make sure y'all understand, we've got to do something with water production. We have to do something with water production. We cannot expand the system if we don't do something with water production.
Tim, if the average is two sixty, and we're over three hundred, and we're using, the customers are using more than the EPA, not recommendation, but, but averages, do we know what's causing that? Just people not, I don't want to say not caring, but I mean, if, if the average is two sixty, and you're using three hundred, and, and that's across the county, that's not.
Yeah, we're, we're told two point six people per house, one hundred gallons per day per person, two sixty per day. We're seeing three hundred per day all the way, and that's looking at a full year. So probably during the summer, that's probably closer to four twenty-five, four fifty.
And my thought is, since we don't have sewer, and we're not capturing the sewer from irrigation systems or stuff like that, people that are watering a field, watering their lawn, watering the cows, or whatever it is, that's just captured as use, residential use, no matter, no matter what it is, right? So, when we say people are, are using more than, than the average, what?
This back, this back up there. If you go back to that first page. The first column, obviously, is the date. The second column, and what we're working on, is the raw water pump. That's what we're pumping to satisfy the demand, okay? That's not what we're selling.
Correct.
Five hundred fifty-eight million gallons in the count, in fiscal year twenty, we produced, we sold four hundred and two million.
So, how do we fix that?
Well, I think the meter, the meter project, finishing the meters, I think, will take care of some of it, it's not going to take care of all of it.
So, with two thirds of them installed, are we seeing what a difference? Two thirds of them, are we two thirds of the fix?
We're about halfway, we got about half installed.
Just correct me, Tim, we were at, what, was it a loss of about thirty percent on the old meters?
Some, I think some of it was a little bit higher than that, because some of the numbers that were being used will be estimated.
Gotcha.
And so when we went and changed that, that changed. But if you just look at this now, just rough numbers, we're billing seventy-two percent of what we're producing right now, but losses about twenty-eight percent. That's over a year across all the county. But you still have some Rockwell meters in the system. They've been made since ninety-six.
So, those are target, okay, making sure.
How long will we, once we get the bids in on February, how long will it be before they're actually in, and we fix this other one-third of the problem?
We're told it'll take six, eight weeks to get all the meters, all of them here. Y'all are awarded at the second meeting in February, we'll probably start, probably first April, take about three months. Probably take another two months to get all the billing issues worked out after that. So, July, something July, August, it'll all be resolved.
What is a, what's an average loss for a county?
Probably twenty percent. EPD tells you the shoot for ten.
Yeah. I know when I worked factory work, you know, three percent was all we were given on loss. So, anything over that, you needed to work on it, so.
Tim, let me ask you this, how proactive are we, or are we reactive to, I'm talking about non DOT people pulling up to a hydrant, filling up a tanker? Because I know, like around the city, if I catch somebody pulled up, it might be a timber company with a helicopter ten miles out waiting on a load of water, if I see them with no meter, I pretty much call great PD. And they pretty, they pull up there with blue lights, because they're stealing water at that point without a meter. How proactive are we in the county? Because I know I found some caps off in different places, and that means somebody just left, you know, it's a dangling cap.
What we do with, like, bulk water, what they used to do before, and I, I stopped it, they would hand out hydrant meters to a contractor, and we, and we were losing the hydrant meters, losing track of them, and so we have one focal point, where we come, with the hydrant right there by the office, and we have a hydrant meter there, and one of the team members will go out, and they'll come up and they'll get the meter reading, and then capture it after they finished. So we don't hand out hydrant meters anymore.
Right, that's.
To the office.
Yeah, I would have.
And that way I can control it a lot better. Sometimes they'll complain, because there's a little travel time for them, but I said that's, you know, that's, that's what we do. So, in terms of people stealing water, I, you know, it could be out there. I mean, I have not caught anybody, but.
It happens.
You know, there's, you know, there's probably out there.
Jeffrey, one of the things, when, when I was over the park system, we had four or five water trucks that run daily, you know, watering all the parks. And the Water Authority, we had hydrant meters for our trucks. And basically, if it was a fifteen hundred dollar meter, we put a fifteen hundred dollar deposit. If we weren't, we were supposed to report in by the twenty-fifth of the month on our, turn our meter usage in. If we didn't by the first of the month, it was a thousand dollar fine for not reporting, not for stealing water, but for not reporting. So if you reported, and you had five hundred gallons or five hundred dollars worth of water, and you didn't report it to the middle of next month, it was fifteen hundred dollars. And if you lost the meter, they kept your fifteen hundred dollar, whatever the cost of the meter was at that time, because I remember it was like three hundred and fifty dollars when we first started, and it got up to fifteen hundred the last time, the last meter I bought, so, or we signed an agreement on. But, I mean, is that a way to, I mean, obviously, if somebody needs water, and that's their business and on up and up, they shouldn't have, it doesn't matter if it's a deposit, it shouldn't matter if it's five hundred or five thousand, you're getting it back, as long as you're being honest. I mean, but, and I, I, just personally, I don't care how pissed off they are if they're trying to steal water. I don't care if they're mad if it's a hundred dollars or a million dollars, you know. But if they're on the up and up, that's, that seems to be an easy, I don't say easy fix, it seems to be a fix anyway.
One thing that Tim had mentioned on, and it's really increased here in the last couple of months, is the, the interest in developing here residentially. Like Tim was saying, there's a gentleman that wants to develop forty homes off Old Moon Way, right across the, right in that forested area there. I had a gentleman call out of state that wanted to build a fifty unit apartment complex off Lighten Ty, just past Popeyes, right down in that wooded area there. We have a gentleman that's developing some land off of Chetman, he's got twenty-five acres for sale, and he's being subdivided up. And half the lakes is just on fire, the new section there is just, I came in the other day, paid for fifteen taps, and he's basically wants to develop that whole new section there out. And I had another builder slash developer that had an interest in fifteen lots there in half the lakes that wanted to know if water sewer were available there. So I mean, there's, I'm getting a lot of interest in development, and that's what's concerning me in terms of the supply. We don't want to hinder the development, but it's coming, whether we really want it or not, and to be ready for it is what we're trying to do. And Henderson Road is definitely a priority, there's just no doubt about it.
Well, we knew all along that water, you know, getting water was, was a big part of our projects, we knew that we didn't have the, the ability to, to pull that much. But I don't want us to lose sight of twenty-eight percent, in my mind, is, is a lot. So, I think we need to look and see, because every, every gallon that we're not selling, we're wasting, and twenty-eight percent is a lot to me to.
Just to break it down a little bit, that, that incorporates hydrant flushing, main brakes, your service line breaks out there, you have to calculate what is being lost on a monthly basis, and then you get your, your loss in your, in your meter too, so that's all.
So do we know, and I know a lot of its estimation, because you, you don't know without the, the, the system to tell you exactly how many gallons flowed out of a pipe at a certain point. You don't, I mean, I'm assuming you're estimating from the time you get the call that the break is to the time you get it fixed, based on water pressure, pipe size?
Yes.
Size of the hole and all that?
Yes.
So, so I know we're estimating it, but do we know how much is due to water breaks, flushing of, of, because there should be a schedule of flushing the hydrants, we should know pretty much.
It's on the, the water balance sheet, on that first inside the front cover, they estimate hydrant flushing.
So if I just read, I would know the answers, huh?
You know, with the severity of the main break and, and, Jeffrey, things like that.
So seventy-eight thousand of twenty-four million.
Seventy-eight thousand of twenty-five million.
Yeah.
I think definitely, once you get your new metering program, and it's going, that's going to really help that percentage of big meters are forty, forty-five years old, there's no way it's going to calculate correctly.
Do we have any known issues other than water main breaks or hydrant flushing? To me, hydrant flushing is a very small percentage of millions of gallons, and we're only talking seventy-eight thousand, and that's predictable and, and quantifiable. I'm just, I'm just looking for ways to, to reduce that twenty-eight percent loss, I think that's, that's big for me.
Our, our, as part of the Henderson Road, we're looking at all the flood meters on well six, seven, nine. The vertical turbine meters, they're very good meters, but they're installed on a, some of those, they don't like that. So I don't know if that, that well's doing three fifty, if it's telling me, the flood meter's telling me it's doing three fifty, if it's doing three eight five, and maybe it's telling me it's doing four oh five. So as, as part of that, we're, we're checking those to make sure they're installed properly, they're calibrated, which the Jeffrey hasn't checked, and make sure they're as accurate as they can be, but typically, you don't, you wouldn't install one on a slate.
No, that's not the way.
So we're, we're looking at those to make sure the numbers, you know, the five fifty-eight, five hundred fifty-eight million, maybe, maybe it's five hundred and ten million. So that affects your twenty-eight percent loss.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and that's the, that's an area, that's an ongoing thing we're looking at.
Okay.
Tim, at one point, GFA, maybe it was when, when the state rolled out the, um, the water loss, the water loss audit, uh, soft, software program thing that they used that. I think it was around that time, GFA came out with a, you might call it a grant or a technical assistance program where they would come out and do leak detection and, and, uh, calibrate some of your larger meters, do they still do that or?
I do not know.
I haven't heard of anything like that in recent years, but I know they did that at one time.
We, we're still doing the water loss and there are a couple of guys, um, one in Abbey Building, then William Shouse, I think, Darren Dean, um. That, that still do as large damming meters.
Tim, I've got two questions. Uh, you know, we talked about water main break, how quick you can drain it, two million dol- uh, two million gallon tank. There's, there's no fail-safe system that can be installed to, to prevent that?
I'll bet fire protection. If y'all let me get rid of all the fire hydrants, we'll take care of it.
All right, but if the tank's empty, you still don't have any water, I just, I just ask it, that's, you know.
Skater system is what, if you're preventing backup there, cause you have, uh, set points that you put in the system. If the tank drops halfway, it'll, it'll let you know. And if it keeps falling, then you know you've got an issue. And, um, so that, that I saved us so many times, it's a skater and the set points that we have. But really last summer, it was, it was a challenge. I mean, I, I got to do a lot of juggling on the skater system to make ends meet. But, um, you know, a lot of this, um, is, is dependent upon the city also. What are they gonna do? Um, I had a nice competition with, with Cheyenne today about, uh, their system and, and, uh, their test well that they were doing and. But even with that test well, it's, it's not, it's not gonna be enough on their end. So, I mean, it's, the demand from the city's always gonna be there for, for a good while. But the skater system's been a phenomenal tool to save us. To catch main breaks fast, that we can get on it. And to be honest with the team that we've got now, it's, I've never seen the boards look as clean as it does in terms of leaks and main breaks and anything like that. I mean, it's, they're on it and we've done a really good job of, you know, fixing it because every day to go by is water loss. We have a pinhole, it's amazing how much water we lose out of the pinhole, um, so.
All right, we got second questions. My second question, we, 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 uh, bring Henderson Water Treatment Plant with all the upgrades. We're still running short on, on production, even that's upgraded, so we need more wells also.
A few years ago, we looked at a couple of well sites on down Henderson Road, on that big crack. I think, I, I'll see the day when we're coming there, i- it's not that far away. What got me going about this, Commissioner Kitchen's, what's our five-year plan? Well, we, we really don't have a five-year plan. We know we need Henderson Road upgraded, we know we need something to happen with Grisville. Y'all, y'all better believe me, he's taking a minute to tell y'all this. Grisville was built in sixty-three, it's down in the bottom. Got a couple of clear wells with it, there's a well on site and there are three on an adjacent piece of property that go back into the woods and maybe two thousand feet away. They pump up to the Grisville plant. On a heavy rainfall, your ankle deep in water standing in the Grisville plant, cause it's running through the building.
Yes, I've, I've been, uh, I've been there.
The electrical, all the electrical for the building is about six inches off the floor. And your ankle deep water and you got four hundred eighty volts in the room next to you. It's not a real nice place to be. There's been some ditches cut, some things cut to take water away from it, but it's just in a low spot. We have talked about moving next door, up on top of the hill with the plant, cause it would keep us close to the wells. But to really benefit Grisville, I need to drill another well. I don't know if I can drill another well. I don't want that property owner to let us go from the south toward the railroad to drill another well. That's something that's up in air with this. Massiville, we've got a site on the other side of Swift Creek, County already owns. We, we can do that in time back in. If you, if you keep listing through the water priorities, three, we get to the Grisville plant. It's about one point, I'd be gone. If I can't get another well site there, we have come to the conclusion, we just need to do whatever we can to, to build and to keep as much water out of it. And then put that toward another location on Henderson Road, where we can go to the other two, the other wells and try to generate another thousand gallons of water. And we'll just, I'm saying we do what came with Grisville, um.
When you say here with Papa Young or yes?
I don't know, I, 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 I haven't looked and I don't know who it is. One thing I do wanna get to you, what priority four? It says water gray highway booster pump connections. Lighten Ty and Gray Highway, as y'all know, my parallel to each other. Lighten Ty is the feed that goes into Gray, uh, Creekside, the southern end of Gray Highway. Pretty good, pretty good service area. We have looked at several several years now, probably six or seven years, we've tried to do a gray highway booster pump station. A booster pump station's about six hundred and forty thousand bucks. It's not your standard booster pump station. When it's on, the suction side sees about a hundred and ten pound pressure, the discharge sees about a hundred and seventy-five, uh, just because of this location. So, it, there is some fail-safe features built into it, some surge protection. A good, good bit of that is electronic and some, and blow-off piping. So if something cuts off and it hammers, it'll have a release to the atmosphere on the outside instead of rallying the piping inside. We have backed off that just because of the expense. And Jeffrey and I have been looking at doing booster pump connections like we have at Lighten Ty. We'll have to hard pipe the booster pump to the discharge side to handle the high pressure. But we should be able to have a suction hose, so if Lighten Ty goes down, if there's a storm and power's out, generator doesn't work, some issue, we can still pump more than everybody else. That's why the, that one had an asterisk on it. One other, the next other issue, the next other item was the North Lighten Ty elevated tank. If you look at the map. This, this project had been locked in with the Graham Road, Homer Roberts Road area, and I pulled it back out. Primarily because we go to Homer Roberts Road, Graham Road, Sand Creek Trail, we need this elevated tank. Because we need a buffer between Jones County System and the city of Gray. We also need the additional pressure and help we get from an elevated tank versus the stand pipe we have on Erica Drive. Stand pipes are great things, they work well, but they have about ten percent effective use on them. Erica Drive's five hundred thousand gallons. When you drop about fifty, sixty thousand gallons, you start seeing low pressure in the area. Elevated tanks different, cause everything's a pop. Elevated tanks are getting more expensive. Ideal location for this thing would be that hay field at the end of Overland Way in Lighten Ty. It's out there on the left, it's one of the highest points in the area. If not, if we had to go all the way down Overland Way to the super properties the county owns, we had about four hundred thousand dollars to cost the project, cause we have to run water main down to it. A large enough name of water main. Those, those are our water prior- those are our water priorities, uh, the things we want to point out to y'all. If you go to keep going, River Point Station, Riverdale. Our lovely friend at the Oldham North Hospital. As y'all know, the board has funded some repairs there in the last three, four years. The Smith and Lovelace Station was the same one that was there nineteen seventy-three, you said before. The problem we're having now is the force main and the piping to start to crush. So it develops a leak and it puts a leak guard clamp on and after a little while it crushes. So, we've thought about condemnation, we've thought about everything, because that pump station site is about as big as this area right here, with a generator sitting on the end of it. The actual station's been a twenty-four inch reinforced concrete piece of pipe, somebody turned vertical. It's a mess, it is a mess. We tried to do something with it when we hit the River North, we did those stations, but, uh, the property owner will not do anything. Because the homeowner association won't give him access to the property owners in back. And, uh, this one's gonna get us folks. Jeffrey's gonna call you one day, this thing's gonna collapse, it's gonna blow apart, we're gonna be pumping all sewage in creek. It's gonna.
So does the homeowner association say why they wouldn't give them access in the back?
They don't want the traffic. He's wanting to develop it and they don't want the traffic, cause there's only two routes.
We, I, I've gotten several calls on basically, when are you gonna do something with it, when are you gonna do this? We, we need to have that conversation with them, that you can't restrict one side and then expect something on the other side. There's a give and take to every project and if, you know, if not, then we, we, we just need to have that discussion with them. Um, maybe we'll set something up with the president of their HOA and a couple of their members and have that heart, the heart talk with them.
You know, I talked, I think, and Mr. Redd that owns that.
I thought you were talking to him.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. And I finally got to where he didn't wanna talk to me no more, no options.
But if his, his option is coming in the backside and HOA won't, won't have it, right?
They don't have nothing to develop out there.
Well, you come in, in the road split, you can go around one way or you can come down by the old hem and come around. And they, they didn't want the traffic. We needed more property, cause we're hanging, I mean, we're literally, the back fence to the drop off to the creek is from A to Debbie, from here to that door behind me, we're in the creek. And they just straight down.
Yeah, I remember.
You, it's gonna, you're gonna be really pulling off something to put one in there where it's at now. I mean, even expand where, I mean, where they put it at was.
Well, this option is, we're looking at actually trying to install a manhole in driveway. So we'll have something to pump out of, replace the force main. And then just set the station back over there just in one of the, look over this, this sort of thing.
The Smith and Lovelace units have changed very little over the years, so the size of the one that we have now compared to a new one is just about there. So also I, I assure Tim, I said, if we can't get the land, why don't we just get another unit that's gonna fit in there? Because I'm, like, I'm, I'm operating in borrowed time, I mean, I've got a diesel pump just ready to cook up in case we can't, you know, it's just gonna give up. I don't like living like that, but, so that's, that's why me. We've got this in here, this, it's a quote that we had, this Smith and Lovelace dealer. In terms of being landlord, this might be your home of choice.
I'm gonna use that dirty word because, um, this has been going on since my first term. And now that third term, um, is, the greater good is a no-brainer right here. If we're unable to negotiate because he wants something that they can or won't give. The little nasty word is called, you know, you take possession of the property, right? Good old. Y'all know what to do. All I can say is, we've been here way too long. And while you wanna do the right thing by the owner and, and of course he wants to leverage his position, you know, this is about a larger constituency of people. And more importantly, the water source, I, I'm just, it's, it's so simple for me, I, I'm gonna take it, you know, for what we need and compensate them appropriately, so we're clear on that. Not just take people's property, but, you know, cover it, because it's what's necessary. Because the negotiations with the homeowner association, I don't know how long that's been going on, but it's been a long time.
Well, there's, there's the homeowner association for River North and then there's one for the condominiums. And it's the one for the condominiums that we gotta deal with.
Okay, yeah.
Two, yeah, two totally different groups. Let, let me keep going, cause I'm running, running out of time. Next, the next priorities, two priorities. We have spent some time smoke testing sewer line in River North. Most of y'all know, uh, between River North and the Swifton Ridge area, we spend about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year with making water party, treating wastewater. Probably half of that is running water. Project two is to go in and do some rehab on two outfalls that go to wastewater. Pump number one, which is one of the flood eyes that serves the flood eyes. And the second one, the, the next priority is to do some TV cleaning of the mighty wells outflow, because we have some issues at mighty wells. We have smoke tested the line and some of the manholes just pour. But for the amount of water we're getting, it's, it's, and some of that's just quite large. So we're looking at TV and cleaning. Jumping on, we have talked about different water expansion areas over the last several years. Water expansion areas, one is the Graham Road, Homer Roberts Road, Graham Woods, Simron, Barker, Sand Creek Trail area. And there's cost estimates with it and then a map associated with the area. When you look at these maps, we physically went out and surveyed and counted mailbox. So if you're looking at the Graham Road map, uh, you know, there's twenty-five from Graham Woods back up to Hook and Beady. In Graham Woods, there's thirty-eight, five of those up, and at Barker, there are eight houses. From Graham Woods, around Barker, there are nine. Luke Barker going down Simron, there are thirty-six. And so we've tried to go through and estimate the number of homes, uh, and whatnot that was there. We gave you three, four areas access. The other big expansion area we've looked at is Highway forty-nine, including a little section on Garrettson Road, Laura Stevens, Highway eighteen, Kitchen Road, Old Grisville, and Grisville Short Trail. Both those areas have been looked at because, one, they're heavily populated, two, but we've got people in those areas that are holding water. Their wells are dead, gone. My next door neighbor, this well's eight hundred foot deep. They let it fill up, one takes a shower, two hours later, they let it fill up like an oven next to them, they shower. And it's been like that for five years, but they, they may do. And I know they're coaching like a, you know, they're holding it. Another expansion area we've looked at, uh, if you don't have a cost estimate for this, is Highway eighteen, Hundred Blood Road, Highway forty-nine channel. It's got those Morton, Edelman, and Bruck Road, and Moore Road, and Deer Creek. Lot of houses in there, lot of houses in there. Three hundred and twenty-eight is what we, what we calculated. Three hundred twenty-eight is what we, what we calculated in there. And the last area that's within here is, uh... Several projects that have been discussed and have never moved in there. On that figure four, the Robertson Drive, F three three, Chandler Drive, Logan Drive, and we did the gray highway plans, we did plans for it, we're planning on doing, we're setting up a site for it. There's fifteen, fifteen, about twenty-six, twenty-seven houses in there, maybe thirty. The next section of gray highway, uh, from Creekside up to Homer Roberts, had a lot of interest in the Browzel Lake area, there's about twenty-five, thirty-five in there. And then finishing out Hookahby and eighteen over Chandler. And there's a lot of information, and, uh... If you have questions, let Jason know, and he'll let me know, and we'll get you an answer, you know, pretty well on it.
Tim, one, real quick, on, uh, you got the, on the water project Graham Road and Highway forty-nine, there's, there's no dollar amount on Graham Road, is this the six million for both of them, or?
No, no, I'm sorry, I, I...
I was, I was hoping you was gonna say, yeah.
He was, he was quick with that response.
Yeah, no, no.
The commercial feelings, uh, the Graham Road area is, is three point three six million is what we've got estimated. BBC Pike Resin right now is a premium. Twelve-inch pike has gone up five dollars a foot in the past eight months. China has quit exporting to the US, three hurricanes damaged two resin plants in, uh, East Texas, uh, Western Louisiana. And resin is being rationed between the different vendors right now. So, you know, if you voted to do one of these projects, it'll take us six, eight months to get it ready, but you don't wanna do anything in the next six or eight months. They're expecting pipe, pipe, pipe places to come down all of September, first October. That's, that's why, you look at the Highway forty-nine, Highway forty-nine project, that's about four hundred thousand miles. It's all pipe, it's all, it's all the pipes. Hydrants, fittings, services, all that stuff, it's pretty much the exact same as it was two years ago.
So, so, quick answer, or, or, is, is the difference in the forty-nine and Graham Road expansion, is it just sheer road distance, you know, distance of running pipe? There's no elevation issues or different pipe issues, or it's just a bigger area to have to...
The forty-nine area is such a larger area to serve, uh... When I, when, when you, when you do, and, and keep in mind, you do the Graham Road area, or you do Comeslow and eighteen, forty-nine triangle, you gotta build that elevated tank, 'cause the Erica Drive tank ain't gonna, ain't gonna support.
Also, the three twenty-eight that we could get from the Comeslow Road area, gotta have the tank with it.
Gotta have the tank, you go Graham Road, you gotta have a tank. You go either way, you gotta have that tank. That's probably the, that's the honest for that elevated tank.
Tim, I got a quick one. Um, on the, on the bond, it looked like we only took a little over half of what we were eligible for. Talk to me, 'cause I may have missed part of that meeting somewhere. Okay, it's on Jason, all right, Jason.
So, as we were, yeah, as we were looking through the list of, of projects that were approved in the SPOS, and trying to determine what might be good fits for, for a bond issue, um, the, the total amount that was put in the SPOS for, uh, for water projects was one point four four million, as I recall. And so, um, Tim and I talked about, how, how much of that would we want upfront to, to kinda get these started? How much do we wanna hold back to, uh, to service debt over the course of the six years? And so, um, so we settled on including four hundred thousand, uh, four hundred or four forty, I think, in the, in the, uh, bond, and then holding back that, that remaining one million that could go towards, uh, debt service. So, that was sort of the, uh, the, the thinking there.
Gotcha, so, of course, we've seen probably ten, twelve million dollars where the project's easy? Sixteen million? I, I didn't count it off, just a guess, but...
Three, six, five, nine, about fifteen and a half.
Fifteen and a half, and obviously, if we wanted to pursue the other part of the bond, we could.
You, you have, you could get the other million for water. You, you could do another bond issue to get that other million dollars.
And the reason why I'm asking, 'cause the obvious is, you know, depending on which direction we go, forty-nine, Graham Road, et cetera, there are three hundred-plus customers, and I was just using our high usage, maybe thirty, forty bucks a month, that service is about a hundred thousand dollars of revenue, and that service is about two million and some change, right?
Yeah.
And if we start those projects this year, depending on what type of GFC loan we get, normally, that payment doesn't come due until sometime thereafter, which affords us the opportunity to recruit as many people onto the system while we have some debt service payments. If it took us three years, we may just break even right around the same time that this additional demand hits. That's just the way my brain operates. So, I'm throwing out, out there to say, let's look at the other project and potentially look at, you know, increasing the issuance or doing the other one, because obviously, we got a supply and demand issue. Then we got maintenance, um, that's gonna be significant in a few different districts that could hit us pretty hard pretty quickly, 'cause we've been talking about River North for years, and I'd hate to see us get a fine, 'cause we end up putting something in the creek, and then that community being down for however long it takes us to get it back up and running. So, I'm just putting those pieces together, and of course, bringing water back up here to Gray and so on, and connecting the dots, so... Mr. Chairman, I don't wanna overstep, but I would just ask, you know, if we could look at the other pieces, or at least a couple of the pieces that make diff, that will make a difference in service to debt that we need to take on to do this.
Sure, but I think today, it looks like to me, priority one, it needs to start pretty quick, with what we got.
It, it does, but the other side of that is, we need somebody like to come phone calls about Grisville, additional well for Grisville, because if they tell us no, then the rehab right here, we scrap it, and we move on and go somewhere else.
I'd be glad to make a contact.
Okay, and the same with the, uh, with the elevated tank.
Okay.
Where's the location of that on Grisville?
Ma'am?
Where's the location on Grisville?
The lady used to cut the paper with. Elevated tank on Gris, are you talking about Comeslow, or are you talking about...
The elevated tank on Gris, the water department, the water plant on Grisville's other side, is it Fox Road, is it?
Yeah, right down in the...
Between, yeah.
It's down in the bottom on the lot, as you, as you hit out of town.
Just give me some airs, I'll be glad to call. I didn't do very, very good with Mr. Redd, but I can still try again.
Well, he, he really thought he could take the rocks aside of his table and make them disappear.
Yep. Anything else for our work session tonight?
No, I'll tell you, uh, Tim and, and Jeffrey, this is, I mean, I know you felt like you were confusing us and, and all that, but this is a lot of good information and detailed enough that even I can understand it, so, thank y'all for...
Thank you very much.
Real good information.
I can get a motion to adjourn our work session, we're through for a five-minute break.
Still move, Chairman.
Second. Second, I'll fair eyes.